There we go, stop standing, so we're good to go. Thank you, Bill. Good morning, everybody. Welcome. We will call to order this regular meeting of the Lawrence County Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, November 12 of 2024. Welcome, everybody who's here. A couple of housekeeping items. We are live streaming the meeting. We are recording the meeting. And we would request, if you have any type of an electronic communication device, if you please put it on silent or vibrate. Appreciate your doing that. We always begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. And then we would ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. Mr. Vanasco, could you lead us in the pledge to that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. Vanessa, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sanado?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Bobler?
Here. We do have a quorum. We always set aside time during the meeting for public comments, both at the beginning of the meeting and right before we adjourn. You're welcome to speak both times. You're welcome to speak one of the two times, or if you're just here to listen, that's equally fine. We do ask that your comments be related to county government matters. And then if you could try to limit your time to about five minutes, we would appreciate your doing that. Everybody get a copy of the agenda, I hope. And note on the agenda that Item 2, we do set aside time in case any of our row officers happen to visit us. We give time for them to speak. But today, we have no row officers here. So that takes us to public comment. Let me open it up and see if anybody has any comment to make at this time. Looks as though we have none. So we'll do this again before we adjourn. Under fiscal and contractual, we have received three bids for repository properties. And let's see, we'll start with the first one. What number will we give this one, Vanessa?
335.
335. And all three of these bids were made for properties in the city of Newcastle. The first one is a bid of $525 for parcel number 03084000, located on Cumberland Avenue in the 3rd Ward of the city of Newcastle. The Newcastle City Council approved acceptance of the bid. By the way, the person making the bid is Nikki Moore, N-I-K-I, Moore, M-O-O-R-E. City Council approved acceptance of the bid on October 11. And then the Newcastle area school board did likewise on October 21. And so did I say October 11 for the city? I wasn't sure if I said October, November. It is October 11 for the city and October 21 for the Newcastle area school district. This is number 335. Chris, any questions?
No, Chair.
Dan, any concerns? Gentlemen, would one of you care to make a motion to accept this bid?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. If there are no other concerns, we can have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next bid, which would be Resolution Number 336, is a bid in the amount of $526.26. The person making the bid is Mr. Paul Berry. The location of the parcel is on West Liberty Street in the city of Newcastle, in the 7th Ward. The ID number is 07-043000. Newcastle City Council approved acceptance of the bid on October 11. And the Newcastle area school district did likewise on October 21. This is Resolution 336, with someone wished to make a motion for its approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you, gentlemen. Chris, any concerns?
No.
Mr. Kennedy? We'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the final bid is, this is Resolution 337. The person placing the bid is Mr. Rick Sikora, S-I-K-O-R-A. He made a bid of $500 for a parcel in the 4th Ward of the city on Pearson Street. The ID number of the parcel is 04151300. Newcastle City Council accepted the bid on October 11. And the Newcastle area school board did the same on October 21. This is Resolution 337, with someone cared to make a motion.
I will accept it.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any concerns? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We did not meet last week because last Tuesday was Election Day. So our packet is pretty thick today. And one of the reasons is that two-week gap. So we do have warrant registers from the Controller's Office. They're also known as check reconciliation registers. And there are five of them. And they are dated October 25, October 29, October 31, November 4, and November 7. It's a listing of all of the checks that have been cut by the Controller's Office. And incidentally, all of these documents that we're talking about, if anybody wishes to see them, we'll gladly share them with you. But I do want to give Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Sanada some time to look these over. And once you've done so, if you do have any questions, certainly raise them. And otherwise, if not, whenever you're ready, gentlemen, I could take a motion to accept these documents. I will accept the documents.
I'll second.
Thank you, both. Do either of you have any questions on what we've been given by the Controller's Office? Hearing none, it's been moved and seconded to accept the warrant registers. We'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have two sets of minutes in our packet this morning. The first are the minutes of the regular Commissioners' meeting that was held on Tuesday, October 29 of this year. And then also, we did have a special meeting of the Board on Thursday, November 7. You may recall that the purpose of that meeting was for us to initiate a ban on outdoor burning in the county. So that's what these two packets of minutes are about. And once again, gentlemen, take whatever time you need to look over. And when you're ready, I could accept a motion to adopt these minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second the motion. Thank you, both gentlemen. Do either of you have any questions regarding the minutes? If not, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under written communications, we've received four documents over the last couple of weeks, which we'd like to enter into the record. The first comes from the civil engineering firm of Feringer McCarty Gray, Inc., located in Monroeville, Allegheny County. And it's addressed to our County Planning Director, Mrs. McKinney. And it states that this notice is to inform you that LG LOTS, L-O-F-T-S, LLC, is applying for a general NPDES permit for stormwater discharges associated with construction activities. The location of the project is 301 East Long, the letter says East Long Street, but correct address should be East Long Avenue in the city of Newcastle. The description is, "The project includes the consolidation of two parcels to construct a 40-unit, three-story apartment building. Construction includes the installation of sidewalks, stormwater management, a play area, and a parking lot." This was sent to DEP, and it was signed by Alexander Markovic. Of course, the law requires that the county be notified of this action. We don't have any regulatory authority, but we do have to be notified. And there are a couple of supporting documents, including a site map and then a drawing of the proposed apartment building. That's our first document. Any questions, gentlemen? Hearing none. The second piece of correspondence comes to us from CEC, Civil and Environmental Consultants, out of Moon Township, Allegheny County. It was addressed to Mrs. McKinney, our Planning Director. And it's giving us Act 14, Act 67, Act 68, and Act 127 notification of the Carroll Substation T Line rebuild project on behalf of Pennsylvania Power Company. It's letting us know that Penn Power, which is a First Energy Company, is submitting documentation to DEP tying in with their project. This involves stream and wetland crossings for the replacement and expansion of overhead electric transmission line. And the project is taking place in Shinango Township of Mercer County and Pulaski Township of Lawrence County. The linear project is located within Penn Power's existing right-of-way in the vicinity of Interstate 376, State Route 551, the Pulaski-Mercer Road and State Route 208. The Substation T Line rebuild project involves rebuilding approximately 3.07 miles of 69 KV and 138 KV overhead electric line within the existing right-of-way. The project will require temporary stream and wetland crossings to remove existing poles, install the proposed poles, and replace the conductors. And then they have supporting documentation. The site map is included in this. It's co-signed by William Harnick, Staff Consultant, and Timothy Johnston, Project Manager. Any questions, gentlemen? Hearing none. The third document comes to us, letting us know, this is from the Elwood Industrial Facilities. This is to notify us that Elwood Industrial Facilities intends to file an NPDES permit renewal with Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. The renewal is, the project name is the EIFC Oxygen Plant. The applicant is Elwood Industrial Facilities. Site location is 700 Moravia Street, located in the city of Newcastle. Signed by Dennis Ritter, Senior Technical Advisor. Any concerns, gentlemen? Hearing none. Finally, from the Hillcrest Group Environmental Consultants out of Wexford, Pennsylvania, they are notifying us on behalf of Allegheny Mineral Corporation that they are applying for an air quality operating permit renewal for the Princeton Limestone Preparation Plant, which is located off of Mount Hope Furnace Road in Slippery Rock Township. Plant consists of several crushers, screens, conveyors, et cetera. There are no changes being proposed as part of this application renewal. Signed by Joseph Pezzi, Project Air Consultant. Gentlemen, those are the correspondence documents we have been presented with. May I have a motion for us to accept them, please?
I will accept the documents.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Staff reports, we move down to Commissioner Reports and Comments. And it looks like I get to go first today. Just a couple of quick items. I'll note that Commissioner Sanada and I had the pleasure of attending Chuck Tanner Day last Thursday. And I want to particularly commend Mayor Alisco. He organized this event. It was a wonderful, wonderful afternoon. So as I said to him, I said to the mayor, I said, "Do you hit a home run today?" Mayor Alisco gave me the opportunity to sit next to and chat with one of my childhood heroes, Steve Blatt, who played for the Pittsburgh Pirates back in the 60s and 70s. So once again, our hats are off to Mayor Alisco and everybody else who played a role in that event. The last thing I'll note, we receive in the mail every month, I believe, magazine from the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. You would be very familiar with this. You probably got this when you were Wilmington Supervisor. Well, the November 2024 edition has a very nice article about one of our local township supervisors. And I'll pass it around. It talks about George Johnson, who is a township supervisor in Slippery Rock Township. He is a graduate of the Pennsylvania Municipal Government Academy. And there's a nice picture of George with Dave Sanco, who's the Executive Director of PSATS. Talks about how George benefited from his participation in this program. So our congratulations to Supervisor Johnson. He is a very hardworking, dedicated local public official. So I'll pass this around if everybody would like to take a look at it. And those are my comments at this time. Commissioner Sanada?
Thank you, Chairman Bobler. I also want to commend Mayor Alisco and Councilman Rogers and Bogart and all the rest of the councilmen who were able to put that together last Thursday for Chuck Tanner Day. I think we all chucked well. He was a great leader in our community. And to see Steve Blatt, the hero of the 1971 World Series, is always good. I had a chance to meet Steve Blatt on other occasions. And, you know, he's in great shape for 82 years old. And it was really a great day for Lawrence County and to honor Chuck Tanner's memory and for the monument that's going to be placed where Valentine's Restaurant was. Also, I had a chance to go down to the Veterans Parade on Saturday. There was a nice crowd down there for the veterans. And I think that it was nice to see them. We had a nice day, started off chilly, but it worked out well. And see so many people, the kids, and the bands, and the organizations that participated in that as well. So it was a nice weekend to honor vets. And yesterday, I actually stopped down at the fire station. They had a bidding ceremony, a veterans ceremony. I was invited to, actually Saturday for me to stop down there on Monday. So I stopped down there. So it pretty much was a nice veteran weekend for our community. That's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanada. Commissioner Kennedy?
The only thing I really got, I saw Chris down at the parade there on Saturday. Nice event for Newcastle. Sorry I had to miss Chuck Tanner Day, but I spent another day recovering from another surgery. So doing okay. We'll get through it.
We're glad you're back. It didn't take you long to bounce back because you were here Friday. We had a lengthy meeting on Friday that you participated in. So we just hope you're feeling well.
Doing good.
Good. Well, stays that way.
Yes, so do I.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for your reports. We'll move on to new business. And today, we have three proposals from our recycling office, recycling solid waste office. Jerry Zona, who is the Director, is with us. Jerry, if you wouldn't mind coming up. Always a pleasure to have you here. We're going to start with Proposed Resolution 338. And if I recall, you do this every year. I could be wrong.
You are correct.
Oh. Doesn't happen too often. So the number 338 is a discussion regarding a proposal for you to submit for a recycling grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. So I'll let you give us the details, if you would.
Thank you, Commissioner. As you stated, this is an annual grant program, which's purpose is to reward counties for their recycling efforts. Pretty much you apply based on your tonnage of recycled materials for the prior calendar year, and you submit it for approval. We typically get anywhere between $20,000 and $30,000 from this program.
Well, I appreciate your always being on top of it. Since we work hand in glove with our friends in Mercer County, and you administer both counties' programs, do they have to pass a separate but similar resolution? Or does this one cover both counties?
And you're correct. They have to pass a separate resolution.
I see.
So you have this on for a different agenda item for those guys in the future.
Okay, so you were making a trip up to the Mercer County courthouse. Very good. Let me see if Commissioner Kennedy has any questions. Mr. Sanada?
No.
And so Jerry, you're recommending that we approve this.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. May I have a motion for Resolution 338?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion. Thank you, both gentlemen. If there are no other concerns, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Vanessa. The next proposed resolution is Number 339. We're in a contract with Aiken Refuse, which I believe is, they're based down in Wayne Township. This would extend the contract with Aiken Refuse for the collection, processing, and marketing of recyclables through the county's recycling drop-off program. Jerry, if you want to give us more detail, we appreciate it.
Sure. This is our most widely known program. This is one that's right out there. The public has been using this program since around 2004. Very much appreciate it. So it's hard to believe that it's been three years and this contract is coming to its end here at the end of the year. One nice thing, we have language in that contract to extend it. It's mutually agreeable between both parties, the county and Aiken, for an additional two years. Nice thing about this is that it locks in the price rate that we're currently at for the next two years, which especially in today's economy is a pretty good thing.
Jerry, these would be commonly known as the Big Blue Bins. Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
And we have a number of municipalities throughout the county that host them. And we do appreciate they're allowing us to do that. There was a period of time when people could drop off both cardboard-paper-type products as well as plastic and glass. But we've had to forego the plastic and glass for now, at least.
Yes.
So right now, it's cardboard, paper, that sort of stuff.
Cardboard magazines, newspaper, junk mail, as long as it's a clean paper type, it can go into the bins. You know, when this contract went into effect three years back, you know, we got through the RFP process. And prior to it, you know, we're currently at around $90,000 a year for the program. We're paying about $121,000. If we would have kept the plastic, metal, and glass, our costs would have jumped almost a quarter of a million dollars. So it was cut materials or cut sites. And we didn't really want to cut sites for people, so we chose to eliminate the materials.
Do you think the day might come when we could go back to having those other materials?
Good question. If the markets and the pricing would ever come down to the point where we could go back, I'm sure that's always something that we can revisit. One nice thing here where we are for both of our counties is that everybody, no matter where they live, has access to curbside recycling. You know, it used to be pretty much limited to your urban areas, and now it's a rural thing as well. So if people subscribe to certain haulers, they can recycle at home regardless of where they live, in either of our counties.
Appreciate you pointing that out. Thank you. Commissioner Sanada, do you have any questions for Jerry on this proposal?
Jerry's pretty thorough, so.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioner Kennedy? Thank you. Jerry, you're recommending that we give favorable consideration to this proposal. So may I have a motion for Resolution 339? I will support Resolution 339.
I'll second that.
Thank you, both gentlemen. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then the last one Jerry has for us, Number 340. This is posing that we retain company known as Nestor Resources, Inc. for the completion of the municipal solid waste plan revision. Could you give us some of the details, including their location? Where are they based out of?
Valencia.
Okay. And then can you fill us in on what the purpose of our contract is with them?
Sure, I'll give you a little bit more background because this is a little bit of a bigger project. So although the public really sees the Big Blue Bin program as one of our most popular programs, our main charge by the state is to draft a 10-year solid waste management plan. So earlier this year, we were awarded the grant to undertake that project. Essentially, our job is to make sure that every ton of trash that gets generated in Lawrence County is either disposed of at the right location or recycled. So a big part of that is an analysis of everything we've gone through the past 10 years and making recommendations for the next decade. That's where Nestor Resources would come in. They did our last two plans. They also did Mercer County's last two plans. The Mercer County Solid Waste Plan was just updated in 2020. So by going with Nestor Resources, there's a law for some continuity between prior work and our work in Mercer County as well.
So your recommendation is that we move favorably on this?
Oh, yeah. This is, the consulting fee itself is around $69,000. That is 100% covered by the grant that we received earlier this year.
I certainly appreciate you pointing that fact out, so thank you. And I'll ask Commissioner Kennedy if he has any questions. Thank you, Dan. Commissioner Sanada?
No.
Okay, thank you. This is Resolution 340. It's been brought to us by Mr. Zona. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions or concerns? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Jerry, you got anything else for us?
That's it.
Well, it's always great to see you. And we know you're on top of things. Hope you'll join us again someday.
Thank you.
Take care, Jerry.
Bye, Jerry.
Everything okay?
Everything's fine, yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, next on the agenda, we have Amy McKinney, our County Planning Director. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning.
Hope you're well. Good, thank you. You have Proposed Resolution 341, authorizing the submission of a request for funding through the local share account, specifically a statewide program through the Commonwealth Financing Agency. So could you give us some of the details behind this proposal, please?
Last year, we applied for the LSA program for status bike trail rehabilitation for about $781,000. And we were awarded, but we were only awarded $100,000. So, which we are going forward with those funds, just scaling down the project and phasing it out. So this will be Phase 2 for hopefully getting the additional funds, if not in full amount, at least additional dollars to do the project. So this would be for us to submit to the program for about $681,000. And again, it's for rehabilitation of the entire status bike trail in Union and the Honeymoon.
Which we, of course, are proud of. We own it, we maintain it, it's a lot of use.
It does.
And we appreciate your office's oversight of it. We're grateful for the dollars we did receive, and we're hopeful for additional dollars as a result of this proposed application. So thank you for being on top of it. I'll see if Commissioner- I'll see if Commissioner Sanada has any questions.
No, it's pretty straightforward, and we're happy to receive it. As Chairman Vogler said, I think there's so much potential at the Savage Bike Trail. And we appreciate all your efforts, Amy, because it is important for recreation in our community. Since I bought my bike this year, I've been on that trail. It's nice to see it continue the improvements that's going to be made. It looks good now, but with these additional dollars, it could be a first-class bike trail. And that's the ultimate goal, I think, for all of us. The number of people that are using it is growing. So that's good for our community, so thank you.
Chris, thank you very much. Dan, any concerns or questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. This is resolution 341 that will allow the planning office to move forward in applying for these dollars. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other questions or concerns, we'll ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Yes, that's all we've got today, Amy. And we'll see you tomorrow. I'll be announcing later today, or later in the meeting, that the planning commission does have a public meeting tomorrow at noon out at Union Township Municipal Building.
Yes.
Hopefully, we'll all be able to make it. Tell me, and are you gentlemen able to do it?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm not sure if I RSVP'd here.
Yeah, I'll let Mary know that all three people will be there.
Give her that warning.
I will, I will, I will, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Have a good one.
Next on the agenda. And Diane, I appreciate your patience. I feel bad, I probably should have had you go first, so forgive me for that.
I'm finding it very interesting.
Oh, okay. You're all right with your time? Okay, thank you both. Chad Strobel is with us. He's got a couple of proposals. Chad is our Public Safety Director. And I always say, a darn good one. So Chad, we have proposed resolution 342, which ties in with the electric bills that we pay for the public safety building in Hickory Township. Would this also include your various sites of the communication towers? Or is this specific to the building?
It'd be all our sites as well, our eight tower sites that we, or seven that we pay electric for. We have eight total, seven, eight, one is electric is included in our leasing fee, so.
Thank you for clarifying that. Didn't mean to jump ahead, I probably should have saved that question. Let me just let you fill us in on what this proposal does.
Okay, this will be to enter into a contract with Clark Energy Management to search for and broker our electric supply prices. We have a very high reliance on electric. Our facility where it's located, cost prohibitive to get gas line run out there, because there's no existing gas supply out there. So our heat, all of our computers, air conditioners, everything runs off of electric. So we do go through a lot of electric. We also have seven tower sites that we have shelters at that we run our radio systems, air conditioners, everything. So we have a high demand for electric. And we would be entering into a new contract with Clark Energy Management. The gentleman that started Clark Energy Management was our, managed our contract with the previous vendor we contracted for, for energy broker. So he started his own business, and we've always had a good rapport with him. He's done well for us, and we'd like to continue our contract with him to search out the best prices for our electric. So this would be a one-year contract. Then we'll be revisiting it next year and see how things went. Try again, but he'll be out looking for the best prices for us to make sure that we make the best investment into our electric supply.
Can you tell me where Clark Energy is based out of?
His, I believe his home office, he's out of, in the Eldwin area.
Lawrence County or Beaver County?
Yes, Lawrence County.
Beaver, Lawrence, okay, that's good to know, thank you. I got a question for Joe. Joe, you know, we're always involved here. You play a major role in companies like this. You're aware of this, this doesn't?
I am, and Chad and I have had a few discussions just in the last couple of weeks, and they've been very happy with this gentleman. They weren't on our rolls with our electric. So when I asked him, point blank, you know, are you comfortable with staying with Clark? Or would you like to explore other options? He opted to stay with Clark, which I'm so.
And you're comfortable?
I'm very.
Okay, that, I'm pleased to hear that. Thank you both. Mr. Kennedy, do you have questions on this?
Yeah, my only concern is if we come in with Chris Lynn cheaper than Clark.
Yeah, you know, a lot of the difference will probably not be in the price per kilowatt hour. A lot of it comes back to the auditing of the bills and so forth. And due to the fact that our relationship has been better. You're right, they've had such a good relationship. Chad's proposing we stay with them.
If I could follow up on the answer question, you'll keep an eye on that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because if there is a major discrepancy, I think we'd want to know about it.
Absolutely.
Would you agree?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Just about more context, a high portion of our payment for electric supply comes from 911 funding, is our general operating cost. So the majority of our electric is paid for by funding that comes in from the 911 surcharge, self- or phone line surcharge. So I don't believe very much if anything comes out of general funds.
To your knowledge, does Clark Energy kind of specialize in agencies such as yours?
Everybody from, you know, the public, just in private residence, they'll search for up to, you know, companies, county government, through governments.
Okay.
They're not in the one, one area. They, you know, they're open for everybody.
Okay, appreciate that answer. Dan, anything else?
No.
Thank you. Chris? I'll just briefly, like, oh, Mr. Kennedy's close. So this is the best price out there?
Yes, I mean, we've always had, you know, great prices with him. When he was a member of the previous company and with himself, he's been in with me with us multiple times and go over, you know, which, where prices are going, how they're trending, and stays ahead of it very well. Jeff was happy with him. A friend and I, we were probably saying to each other last year, I've been impressed by the prices. And when he's done well, he's told us, and we know that's not the best way to go. And yes, this is, so, I mean, he hasn't tried to gouge us or get us on anything, but honestly.
Yeah, that's, I think that's the important part, you're comfortable, John.
I'm very comfortable.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you all, gentlemen, for the conversation we've just had. It's been enlightening and helpful to me. If my colleagues are ready, I could take a motion for us to approve proposed resolution 342.
I move we approve resolution 342.
I'll second.
Thank you both. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then proposed resolution 343. You're looking for approval for a contract with OnSolve LLC. And can you describe to us what services they provide to the public safety department?
Yes, OnSolve is a vendor for mass notification systems. We use that for public alerting during emergencies. We can send it out to geographic areas if something were to occur in Blaston Township. We can draw a box around Blaston Township and notify all the residents or anybody passing through there of an event that's going on, some type of incident. We also use it for internally, for notifying our local teams and personnel. There was an event, it was a power plant. We have groups set up for that and scenarios that we can just send that out within a couple of minutes, have a notification out to everybody that needs to be notified of that. This would be a renewal of an existing contract. We've been using them for, going on, this is, it was 2017 when I came into the administrative side. But we've been using OnSolve primarily through Code Red software is what we use. This would be a change in the previous contracts. As we're normally doing year to year, we started noticing there's been a pretty good increase in pricing from year to year. We discussed that with them. And this time, we'll be entering into a three-year contract, and that'll lock the price in annually for the next three years at what we would have been paying this year. So that'll keep us some cost savings. And again, now funding for this does partially come from grant monies from the state. We use some of our hazardous materials monies and some 911 monies to cover the charge on this. So it would be for over three years, $28,950 and 30 cents annually, $9,650, where we've been noticing about a 5% to 6% increase annually on that price. It would lock us in for three years. And that would give us the ability to, one, fulfill that requirement for the Commonwealth to have a mass notification system to alert people that incidents, they would, they've been integrated to us. We are researching some other options that would integrate with our computer dispatching system, but right now, there's a just box I'm looking around. So when this contract ends, we can look to see if there's a more cost-effective option. But for now, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is using this system, and multiple surrounding counties are using the same system. So Mercer is getting on board with it. Butler County is already using it. Pennsylvania state government is using it for their mass notification as well, along with EDAS, so being warned, so.
Well, thank you, because I did have a couple of questions that you just answered covering your presentation, so thank you for that. I'll see if Commissioner Sanada has any questions.
No.
Sir? Commissioner Kennedy?
I just have a comment. I've used this probably since I was a supervisor at Wilmington. You don't only get a phone call, text, message, Gmail. You can know, it just starts going crazy on your phone when you've got an incident coming to your area. And so it works very well.
Is this, is this the one I get when we have, like, thunderstorm warnings? Because I get, like, you, I get an email, I get a voicemail?
Yeah, if you have the app, it will send you something. Pennsylvania kind of retains the control over weather statements. So us at the county level, we're not allowed to release a weather statement that has to come from the National Weather Service through the state's coordination center. But we would use it internally for missing persons, fires that are causing some type of traffic disruption. I sent out a message a few years ago for a police incident where a person was firing a weapon and putting us public in danger. So it'd be those messages. The app does give you a weather message if you subscribe to it. It's at 99 cents annually, you can get weather messages as well. But we do not send weather, we vet out.
So I guess what I'm getting must be coming from the state?
Yes.
Okay. That's good to know. Dan, anything else? Well, gentlemen, you've heard Mr. Strobel's presentation. This is proposed resolution 343. Would one of you care to make a motion for its approval?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further comments? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Chad, before you head out, how's our burn on outdoor banning seem, ban on outdoor burning seem to be going?
We've had a, only a couple brush fires since that was implemented. And I believe Saturday morning was the first time it could actually be enforced. There was a fines and penalties. We did receive a lot of burning complaints over the weekend from concerned neighbors saying, you know, a neighbor's out here burning. The police did respond. I'm not sure what actions they took, but they did, you know, urge homeowners to extinguish the fires and kind of stop. We had a pretty good amount of rain over the weekend. Our fields surrounding our building, kind of what I go off of, they're still very dry. I think if somebody flicked a cigarette in there, it would light up almost immediately. We did have some rain. We pulled a pass for Thursday, so hopefully. But in the long run, we're still over three inches below our average rainfall for this time of year. So it's still very dry, it's still breezy. See much relief from the conditions yet, hopefully. I mean, it's a rain Thursday, and next week, they're forecasting some rain. But it seems to be working, or has it not been that busy with brush fires since that went out publicly? Overall, defending is our outlets, so.
Well, I mean, sir, I believe you did the right thing bringing it to our attention. So we appreciate it.
The fire chiefs were all very happy with the decision made. They received a lot of calls saying, thank you for getting this place. It was, they were running a lot.
Any final questions for Mr. Strobel? And we did the roll call, didn't we, Vanessa?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Chad, we'll, got anything else for us?
No, I'll be back in a couple hours. We're meeting about actually the program system. We're using it a little bit more.
Super.
Yeah, have a great day, thank you.
Thanks, thanks for your time. We have a special guest today, and we appreciate her patience. Diane Richardson is from the Lawrence County Economic Development Corporation, also known as Forward Lawrence. Commissioner Kennedy serves on their board of directors. And Diane, you have a proposal. This would be proposed resolution 344, which would have the county enter into an agreement with the Economic Development Corporation relative to Keystone Compliance, which is located at 131 North Columbus Interbelt in the city of Newcastle. And this involves a grant from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, also known as RACPE. But we'll let you fill us in on all the details, if you'd be so kind.
Certainly. The Lawrence County Economic Development Corporation is requesting that the county enter into agreement once again with us on this project benefiting the Keystone Compliance operation in the city of Newcastle on the corner of Columbus Interbelt and State Street. This project, believe it or not, that started five years ago with a RACPE award that was made in 2019 for the Enterprise Park project. It's also in the city of Newcastle. It was in regards to the Horizon Supply Expansion that did not occur. So the grant funding, the RACPE grant funding was then moved over to the Keystone Compliance Expansion Project. That grant award was $1.5 million as part of the RACPE project. We need to enter into a cooperation agreement with the county to support the project. Basically, that project involves the construction of a freestanding 10,000-square-foot building. I'm sure you've all seen it as you passed by that corner. Just took a tour of it the other day. It's an incredible building. It's, the expansion is to increase the keep of buildings in their environmental laboratory studies. And if you had a chance to look inside their current facility, you can see that they're, they're in need of a lot more space. It's very crowded in there. Most of the environmental lab testing capabilities will be geared towards their military and aerospace and transportation testing. This project affects about 40-plus jobs currently in Lawrence County through Keystone Compliance. We're, as you've seen from the construction project progress, we're nearing the end of this. And we respectfully request permission from the county officials to help us with this project.
Thank you for giving us that information. And it's always encouraging to hear the potential for job growth in our county. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Kennedy, because again, in this instance, he wears a couple hats. He's here, of course, today as one of our county commissioners. He's here, of course, today as one of our county commissioners, but he's also on the board of LCEDC for Lawrence. So Dan, any comments or questions on your part?
No, I agree with you, Dan. It creates more jobs here in Lawrence County, uh, number one. Number two, downtown Newcastle, they're not just for, uh, the main, uh, main city. And they've done a very good, that building is a very nice building, they've done a great job, so, um, we need to keep supporting stuff like this in our county and keeping it moving. That's my main concern there is that, it's, uh, it's good for Newcastle, it's good for Lawrence County, and that's, we get, uh, two hits right there getting that done, so.
Well, I appreciate that. I, I think it's important that the residents of our county know how much time and effort Mr. Kennedy puts into his responsibility as a board member. He goes to a lot of meetings and, uh, some of them are in the evening. And, uh, he has, uh, devoted a lot of his time and energy to his role as one of the board members at Forward Lawrence, so we appreciate all that you do, Dan. Commissioner Sanada, questions or comments?
Uh, um, thank you, thank you Diane. I know you did a good job down there, we appreciate that. How many people work there now? How many do you know of?
I think it's about 43.
Okay.
And they're certainly growing. This project will obviously encourage them to hire even more people.
I'd like to see it sometime, you know, I, I just.
I can arrange that for you.
Yeah, you know, a little history, um, when I graduated high school before I went to college, I had my first job with Marshall Manufacturing, which is that facility.
It's, it's called the Marshall Building.
Yeah, and that was.
And then it was plastics.
I made $2.50 an hour, which was 15 cents more than minimum wage. And I, that was my very first job in, uh, 1977. And from that, I started school in the fall, so, and I've been in the building since then. So I'm just glad to see it's still there and growing and, uh, doing something positive, you know, in the community. So, uh, that's just a little history of mine, that was the last time I was there, it's been a long time, so.
I think it's.
Yeah, once things slow down with us up here, we'd be happy to see it. Thanks Diane.
Thank you, Chris. Well, this is proposed Resolution, uh, 344, uh, so in order for us to move forward on it, may I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other concerns or questions, uh, we can have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Diane, thank you for your time and all the information you've shared. You are most welcome to stick around, but we also know how busy you are, so if you have to head back down the street, we certainly understand.
Great, thank you.
Thanks Diane, appreciate your coming up. As we approach the end of the year, you'll notice that we, uh, have, uh, a higher number of transfers, which is common, this is not, not at all uncommon. So we've got to work our way through some of these. Now, the first couple are budget amendments that result from unanticipated revenue that we have to account for. The first being, uh, proposed Resolution 345. And it looks as though in this instance, we received a revenue of $960 of a grant, it's called the Hoyt Grant for Parenting Classes, and we're going to earmark that $960 to the parenting program expense line item. Would that be CYS? Okay, okay, thank you. I'll see if Commissioner Sanada has any questions. No. Commissioner Kennedy? Joe, I should have asked if you had anything to add to this.
Um, no.
Okay.
Just, uh, increase revenue in, in that area and, uh, obviously then we have to adjust the budget.
Which this resolution allows us to do.
It does.
Okay, may I have a motion for Resolution 345? I move we support Resolution 345.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other questions, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then, uh, Resolution 346, once again, we have not budgeted for this revenue, uh, and, uh, the amount of the revenue is 80,000. Well, the resolution is worded a little differently than the supporting document. The supporting document says 80,813 dollars. The resolution says eight, 83,000 even. I'm assuming the, the first is correct, do you think it's 813?
It should be 813.
It should be 813? So if, if we could take the, uh, the, uh, resolution and, and adjust that to be 83,813 dollars. Uh, this is money that came in for, uh, improvements at the Quaker Falls County Park in Honee Township. And when we formulated last year's budget, we were not expecting those dollars. You have more to add on this?
Uh, just, uh, a lot of it's just done spent money from last year, don't think we've spent moving into this year's budget.
I appreciate that clarification and I'll ask Mr. Kennedy if he has any questions.
No.
Sir, uh, Mr. Sanada?
No.
Okay. Well, uh, could I have a motion for Resolution 346?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
If there are no other concerns, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Proposed Resolution, uh, 347, uh, this falls under, uh, District Judge Amody's office. The total amount of the transfer request is $35,020. The line item from which all of this is coming is the court salary of staff and it's broken out as follows. $24,800 is earmarked for the line item of salary of staff for District Judge Amody. $8,000 is for the line item of temporary part-time staff for District Judge Amody. And then $2,220 is for affiliated FICA expenses. This is Resolution 347. Joe, anything else we need to know about this?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Sanada, any questions?
No.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
May I have a motion for Resolution 347?
I move we support Resolution 347.
I'll second.
Thank you both. And if there are no other questions, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks Vanessa.
You're welcome.
Now, we've got a good list of transfers, I'm going to start going through these as you, uh, Mr. Rippon?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a question?
I do, I do.
Uh, oh, and I think the first two are.
That's why I'm here.
Okay.
Yes, those two, that's, um, may I?
Uh, yes, let me enter into the record that the first request is coming from the treasurer's office. You'd like to come up front, please, Rich?
Sure.
And you're certainly in order.
Thank you. Good morning, guys.
Good morning.
Now, reviewing the agenda, um, those two requests are incorrect.
Okay.
That was actually approved on October 29th, 2024. We had set up a request through the controller's office for $4,000 on November 1st. That's what needed to be on the agenda. So I just didn't want you approving something that was already done.
I have that on the agenda for next week, I didn't get it at the time.
Yeah, no worries, buddy.
So Vanessa, did I hear you say it's, at your anticipation it will be on next week's agenda?
Correct.
At, at which time we'll consider it more likely approved.
These, but these two here.
These two we can, we can set aside.
Yeah, I have, that was approved, uh, October 29th, the one for 500, the one for 1,500. I just didn't know you duplicated.
No, and I greatly appreciate your bringing that to our attention. I'm going to write on here, previously approved, and you said on, uh, October?
October 29th.
Thank you.
This is a recent transfer approved.
Previously approved on October 29th, so we obviously don't need to.
No.
Do it twice, do we?
Kind of.
Thank you so much for, for bringing that to our attention. And, um, uh, Rich, I'll come upstairs as soon as we're done here and get you for retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rich. So we'll, uh, we will pass over, uh, there's no need for us to consider, uh, the first two, uh, requests, item 11A and 11B, uh, since, as noted, they were already acted upon two weeks ago. Judge Amody's office is asking for a $400 transfer from her contingency into that of internet services. Adult Probation is requesting a $600 transfer from their contingency into their electric line item. The Jail is asking for a $30,000 transfer. It's broken out as follows. $20,000 towards salary of staff and $10,000 towards electric and the amount, the total amount is coming totally from their maintenance and repair line item. Children and Youth Services is asking for a $20,000 transfer. All of it is coming out of contracted provider care, broken out as follows, $10,000 towards client transportation and $10,000 towards their port-related cost line item. The Coroner's Office is requesting a $17,500 transfer from, I hope I'm reading this right, Act 182 contingency. Does that look right, Joe?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Into Act 182 Major Equipment. Juvenile Probation is asking for a $500 transfer from their contingency into their travel and training line item. The Assessment Office is asking for a $500 transfer from their contingency into their Staples line item. District Judge Nicholson is requesting a $1,300 transfer from her telephone line item into her electric line item. The Tax Claim Office is asking for a total of $685. All of it is coming from their contracted consultant line item, it's broken out as follows. $420 into their telephone line item and $265 into their Staples line item. Children and Youth Services requests a $1,200 transfer from contracted provider care into their unemployment insurance line item. The Planning Office asks for a transfer of $2,812.90 coming from miscellaneous administration into, I'm assuming CO stands for County Administration?
Yes.
Uh, County Administration 2020. Judge Russo's office is asking for a $400 transfer from his contingency into, uh, his unemployment insurance line item. Judge Amody is asking for a $1,500 transfer from her line item of materials and supplies into her Staples line item. Judge Russo requests a $725 transfer from his materials and supplies line item into his telephone and internet line item. And then finally, the courts are asking for an $800 transfer from their contingency into their telephone and internet line item. It's a lot to digest, but let me see if Mr. Sanada has any questions.
No, it seemed pretty straightforward.
Thank you. And then Mr. Kennedy?
Nothing.
Joe, you're comfortable and Vanessa, everything you've gone over, everything looks okay?
Mm-hmm.
May I have a motion to approve the requested transfers?
I move we approve the requested transfers.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Couple of announcements, uh, the Board of Commissioners will meet a week from today on November 19th at 10:00 AM in this room, open to the public. Probably in about 10 minutes, uh, the, uh, county's retirement board will have their regular quarterly meeting in this room, open to the public. That consists of three commissioners, the county comptroller and the county treasurer. The County Planning Commission, as we noted earlier, they will hold their monthly meeting tomorrow, November 13th at 12:00 noon at the Union Township Municipal Building, uh, that's open to the public. On November 20th, a week from tomorrow, the Lawrence County Prison Board will hold its monthly meeting at 12:00 noon in this room, open to the public. On November 26th, this board will not be meeting, uh, I believe two of the commissioners will be attending the, uh, the Fall Conference of the Lawrence, of the, uh, Pennsylvania County Commissioners Association. That meeting will take place in Dauphin County. Port House will be closed on Thursday, November 28th and Friday, November 29th in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. And then finally, I wish to announce that there is an opening on the Lawrence County Industrial Development Authority. Uh, this is the first of two announcements that I need to make. If someone is interested in serving, they can either send us a letter expressing their interest, uh, including, uh, their address and their social security number in order that we can conduct a background check. They can also come to a public meeting and indicate their interest for serving. So we'll also announce this, uh, opening a week from today. Those are the announcements I have. Let me see, uh, if there are public comments. Does anybody in the room have a public comment today? If not, thank you. I'll see if my fellow commissioners have closing comments. Mr. Kennedy? Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Sanada?
No.
Uh, thank you. And then, uh, Vanessa or Joe, anything that maybe we forgot to do or overlooked? Okay, looks like we're all right then, so, uh, once we adjourn, if you give us about five minutes or so, then we will reconvene as the retirement board. So that being said, there being no other business to be probed before this board, may I have a, an adjournment motion?
I make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you.